I was Meredith. They're back. So Lincoln, I see Molly. I'm gonna let you go.
Okay.
Hey, Lincoln. How are you?
Hi, nice to see everyone.
Um, this is Lincoln Lewis, um, our newest team member. He's, uh, participating in a fellowship with, oh, you guys got it through email. But planning commission, did we forward you guys? We have a, uh, well, Lincoln, maybe you can describe a little bit to yourself. We have, uh, Commissioner, uh, Angeline and Chair of the Planning Commission, Caldivano here. Um, and of course Liaison Grisco and then Town Council Member, um, Eileen Morse.
Should we, um, is this part of our minutes? I mean, our agenda should be follow meetings order?
Do you have anybody who wanted to join remote or? And do you, do you want to wait a little bit longer?
Not really, because we've got the council coming in at seven. So if we don't get our work done, then we're just gonna push everything out. And I had hoped to get everything done tonight so that we don't have to have another session to finish this up.
Okay, so you can call a session and, uh, we could run this as. You guys are running it.
Okay, following the meeting, we're at six oh seven P M. Do we have, um, any agenda sprint about?
Yes.
Okay, Jen, so she's coming.
Okay.
We have arms, we can begin. We just keep having more of it, we're leaving now.
This is the council on this.
Oh, and I picked the wrong one up.
Do you want to put the cameras so it's facing you?
Sure.
Straightforward motion inside.
I know we go with this agenda.
Okay, so, um, so let's get started. So we're building off of the strategic planning and priorities that was done with the council uh, a couple of weeks ago. And this is where we're gonna start to get into some of the details about a work plan. Let's see here. So I hope to get some things out of this in terms of actions in the various strategic priorities that we can actually carry forward, that will, uh, that we can all work towards jointly and set goals and objectives for, okay? So I always say, I always have the same vision without implementation is hallucination. So we have this now, and I briefed you all, the strategic, uh, plan and priorities. But unless we actually put it to work, it's just a document, it's just a piece of paper. And so this is the first step in putting it to work. Um, so the first thing we're gonna cover tonight, I wanna get you all on the same page about what the business of the planning commission is. Um, roles and responsibilities. I'd like to, we have a diagram that I shared with you that the council did. And I think it was very, uh, it was very illuminating, certainly for me and I think other members of the council, because, um, there was a lot more on it than anybody thought. So as they started to say, this is our job, this is what we do. We ended up with this whole big spider, you know, diagram, and it was interesting to see how complex the roles and responsibilities of the council are. So I'd like to start out with that, um, for the planning commission. Hello and welcome. I'm Eileen Morse.
Shannon.
Shannon, nice to meet you. Um, so I wanna start out with that. I want to look at potentially some checkpoints as we think about uh, communicating. Molly and I had a meeting, uh, not too long ago on communication. So I'd like to talk about, um, checkpoints between the council and plan commission. And what your thoughts are there. And then we'll invite the town council in, the, uh, council will come in at seven o'clock and we'll talk about goals and objectives and measures and how we can better work together moving forward. Does that sound reasonable? Yeah?
I hate to interrupt, uh, Javier. Funny to connect to the internet and I was hoping that maybe you could assist me.
I can play around with it.
Okay. So I copied this off of a, a site about the planning commission. The primary role, as its name implies, is to plan. A body of citizens that serve within a local government, acting as an advisory group to the municipal governing body on issues and policies relating to planning, land use regulation, community development. Planning commissioners act as citizen planners and work to develop plans and implementation policies that affect how their community manage changes in growth and development. And I think that's really important, especially in a year that we're looking at redoing the comprehensive plan. Um, so I'm hoping that some of the work that we're going to do here tonight might fold into work that you're gonna do to update the comprehensive plan this year. Do you, did you ever decide on a, a sort of like schedule for that? I know, uh, when I went to the planning commission meeting, there was talk about it was due in twenty twenty-three, maybe by November, I heard, but then some people said, well, that date is kind of lax. So I'm not really sure.
It's during five years, so in two, in twenty twenty-three, there's no, you know, regular sort of agency that it was come down unless if we're a little late on it and we figured we needed part of the year to get it done. And especially if we're in April and we still have a long way to go, so. I think if we got us council in November or December, that would be fine. And we're not gonna get in trouble or anything. So I think we should work as, as expedition team that we had going forward, but understand that in my view, twenty-four, if our council votes on it.
Okay. It would be nice at some point to have a sense of your, like, project plan. You know, your list of activities just at a really high level. And just sort of, these are the marks that we're sort of aiming for loosely, and it's gonna be ready sort of around the state.
So that's a really good point, and it's something that I wanted to talk about. Um, Matt had gone to the Berkeley group and gotten a quote for them working on the plan with us. And they wanted sixty thousand dollars. So obviously we can't afford that. We talked about perhaps using them for parts of it. Um, you know, we're a small town, we don't need something as elaborate as the county. I mean, the county is.
Right. It's much more complex, right?
Yeah, and, and the steps are all very much more complex. But we never sat down and said, okay, these are the parts of it that we like, and this is what we want to implement. And come up with an actual plan going forward. So yes, it would be a good idea for us to work on the different, um, I don't know, points that we wanna hit and at what, when we want to hit them. So we could go through that in a little more detail. I'm not the best planner when it comes to coming up with all the steps, so I really, while the rest of the commission, they don't come up with that. I talked to Matthew Johnson, he said he's really good at planning, so I said, do me a favor, look at that Berkeley proposal and you know, see what you can do with that, but maybe you guys could do that as well. I'm the sort of person where I'm just kind of putting stuff, hanging on things, and I know you're not really like that at your shrink meeting. So let's use our strengths in this group to figure out who's good at that sort of thing, and let's put plans together.
Well, and one of the points of communication between council and planning commission would be just a high-level notional thing about the touchpoints, about what your goals are for that at the various points. So council can just say, oh, if I wanna just see what's going on. Here's, it would be a good time to sort of tap into the group and say, you know, where are you and, and whatnot.
Yeah, and, and it would be good for the public also. And I was hoping by the side of the gap, so we can kind of follow, like, have a timeline showing the progress too, so that people can jump in at any point to follow what we've been working.
Okay. All right, so, um, you all have stickies. Dan, you went to the last one, so you know how this goes. So I'd like you to take a few minutes and think about what it is that you do. And I want you to write it on a sticky, each one independently. So we developed the comprehensive plan, that's a sticky. We, you know, new zoning uh, application, another sticky. So I want you to think and write as many of those ideas that you know that are your business. Uh, so that we can get those down on paper, because I'd like to have the, um, same type of spider diagram for the strategic plan as we did with the town council.
We were, we all.
Yeah, each of you. No, just keep them to yourself. We'll put them all up here. I'll give you three minutes.
If I'm a little wordy.
Try to think of as many things as you can that you do and capture. It's helpful for, it was helpful in talking to the town council too, and for the public to look at the full scope of what the town council has on its plate. Um, because you think, well, you're just up there meeting, you know, twice a month, and what do you really do? Right? And when you start to map it all out, that's a lot of work. So, um, I think even some of the town council members were like, wow, that's a lot. Okay. Can we start to collect some of them? Okay, I don't even wanna collect something about that. We gotta show.
No, that's tomorrow night.
All right, let's put them up here.
It's not.
These aren't very sticky. Okay, once I get these up here, I wanna re-lock you. Okay. So we have a lot of good inputs here, a lot of responses that you did on the comprehensive plan. Work with citizens to find out what their vision is, uh, for the town. Work with the public to implement better zoning and safety issues. Subdivision, flat reviews, hold public hearings, study town infrastructure. Create communities at that, at the bottom. Support town plan. Uh, suggestions, recommendations for anything related to traffic, sidewalk, land, tillers. Positively represent the town, so projecting the image out. Review specotune permits for rezoning and air V B's. Work collectively as a group, making decisions. Protect town resources. Create a small area plan, work with developers. Land use zoning planning and mapping. So a lot of functions, right? A lot more than I probably would have thought too. Um, so the trick is gonna be, and when we get the council in here, what I'd like to talk to them about is sort of given that there are all these functions that you all are doing, and this is moving constantly, right? How do we keep in communication? What are those touchpoints? And so we'll work together jointly with them to say, okay, where should we be involved together? Where do we need to work independently? Where can we help one another? Like, this thing was a good example. This, um, discussion earlier was a good example on, uh, where some, there probably could have been better communication. Right? And I've been talking to the council too about having some kind of template that when there's a decision to be made, you have to fill in the template and bring it, because too often people are just saying, hey, what about this? Or hey, I don't like this or whatnot. But we don't get all the background information. And this one was a confusing one, since it was from how many years ago, right? We're trying to recount all that history. And then bring it up to date for what we're doing today, right? So that was a prime example of where we probably could have done a better job communicating on both sides, because when it came to me, quite frankly, I didn't understand it. So I'll use those things that you gave me to put up your function on the slide in the strategic plan, okay? There anything that you left out? There is nothing about sort of joint joint communication with the town council. And maybe that should be, and there's nothing, I don't think, from the town council's side. Uh, there might be something with planning commission, I'll have to go back and look in that. But there are some touchpoints, I think, that we could, um, could do better, so that we're not approving stuff that you feel, um, is not prudent, right? Because you all are the experts looking at a lot of this stuff. But that we have your detailed view on it before it comes to us too. Okay?
Yeah, and one of the things that is probably independent later is that we like to see that reverse communication too, when you made a decision, especially if it's contrary to our recommendation, we'd like to hear about that.
That's a great, that's a great thought. So let's, usually I have a parking lot.
That would be great. Follow-up, like, just paragraph about, you know, what was the thinking, you know, that kind of thing, was, was our recommendation level? Maybe it doesn't need to be just a yes or a no. Maybe a yes with some extra. You know? And then by its explanation, you know, just like some sort of consensus for, for us all.
Um, and the other thing is, one of the things, and I brought this up at the council meeting too, we were talking about, I was talking about developing a rule, uh, rules of procedure and decorum. But, um, there's no real process document that says, okay, this is how things should flow. Like, does there have to be a zoning application for these types of things? When does that happen? If it's denied, what happens? Does it fall? Does it go to council? Can council override it? I would like to see a process diagram even at a high level. So that we all know, hey, have you done step, you know, if somebody comes to the council and they should have come to the planning commission first, that the council said, wait a minute, you've, you've skipped step one, two, and three. You're in step four, you need to go back to step one, go see the planning commission, or, or vice versa, however that works. Right? So I think a high level, if you could write that high-level process diagrams, um, I think that would be helpful for me. I don't know if that would help you all. Any reaction to that?
Well, we rely on Matt to explain that to us through, I mean, I think from a stratimist standpoint, it makes sense that that's all spelled out in writing so that Matt doesn't have to read that, we open it every week comes after him. I mean, maybe that's something that you're taught in school, but it'd be nice to see that process writing for everyone.
Yeah, some kind of diagram so that we all know what is what. Um, okay.
I, I don't know how you all feel about this, so let me know, but, um, I kind of feel like I hit the ground running with out a bunch of information. And it wasn't anybody's fault, because there's a handbook. And there's a comp plan, and then there's all these documents and things like that. I think it all gets into a little pile like this. You know, I'm a volunteer and I do this in addition to my regular job, and I appreciate that I should be on top of all of this, but I think an orientation for new members to orient them just to understand, like, you know, the town administrator's gonna keep track of what we're doing here. Um, and we're gonna have something to look and refer to if we need to know something about what has happened. Um, you know, and here is what a meeting is like. And here are the rules to making a motion and seconding a motion and calling a yoke or just a yay or a nay, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, and town council, like, maybe, you know, a buddy to go with you during your first town council. Play something cracking.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that idea.
Yes, we felt, at least I felt the same way on town council. So when I got appointed, there was nothing, right? There was, oh, I can drop a few things. I think because we're a small town, in the past, it's been more of an oral tradition, right? Now we're too busy. And so, um, Javier and I worked on, um, developing a welcome packet, at least, that has, these are the things you have to do, because I had to do Freedom of Information Act training and Conflict of Interest training and all of these things, but they weren't all written down in one place, right? And then there's the Virginia Municipal League that has its rules about how council is run and things like that. So I'm not sure if there's, you know, if you all have, do you have a handbook that you, you know, a Virginia handbook for planning commissions or something like that equivalent?
There is a planning commission handbook that you get when you take that class out of B C U. But I feel like that should be in the package. That should be available.
Right, and that's what we did. We put, um, Javier and I developed a welcome letter and then the Virginia Municipal League manual as a place to start. And then there's a list in there of other things that you should be familiar with. Which I don't think we have Robert's Rules in there. It might be helpful, Javier, so can you take a note to put that in there? So that's a really good comment. And we should probably have something similar for planning commission. These are big jobs with big decisions. Um, it's really difficult to make if you don't have some of the context running. I came up here and printed out a lot of manuals and things that were in the library here. I made copies uh, for myself so that I could take them home and read through them and whatnot. I haven't gotten through them all yet, but at least I'm, you know, working on them.
And that's, that's the intention, but.
Right.
Um, my life's pretty full right now, and I'm just feeling very much like, um, I don't want this a responsibility or an insight or something like that. I just think it would have been nicer to not feel like I was scrambling in the beginning. Um, or maybe yesterday. You know what I mean? So there's, um, yeah, it's just a suggestion.
Yes, no, that's a great suggestion. I have it in the parking lot, and we should follow up on these. That's the other thing I noticed is that from our meetings, we don't capture all the action items, and we don't follow up on the action items. So can you put that on? Capture action items and, uh, and follow up on them. Um, and we should do more of that too, because we go back and something's been decided, or it's like, hey, you're supposed to look into that, or what happened to that? Did we decide on that? Oh, no, you're supposed to go look into that and bring that information back. And we get too busy. Yeah, and so I think there needs to be a stronger emphasis on our actions and follow up on those on both sides.
Yeah, I'm really, um, also interested in being able to do a quick check on what happened in relation to, um, you know, different issues, like we were just discussing the, the Radick property. And, um, Javier had to go back and look for the minutes and stuff like that. I just feel like is there a way to make that somewhat different or in a different format? is there a way to make that somewhat different or in a different format? I don't know if that's governed by a process through the state or whether, I know minutes are just a narrative about what happened, but I would love to see it be, you know, a relational database of some sort, you know, you can either look at it as a Bradley property or what happened on the state or whatever. Be nice to have some sort of way to look up the institution.
Yeah, well, I know that we're putting our ordinances online and that might help, but see, without any documentation other than the minutes, right, it's really difficult. So one of the things that I had proposed was sort of if you're coming for a decision like the this Radley decision, I think you're talking about, that we have a form that you fill out and has the background, the alternatives, the pros and cons, et cetera, and it has a thing for the vote, who voted yay, who voted nay. Right? So we're capturing the decisions that we're making, right? And then that decision template could go to you all. This is the decision that we made with some scribblings about why it was made that way, right? And that would help keep the two groups in better sync.
To have it on the agendas and action items, you know.
Follow up from the Yeah, so any decisions that were voted on from our town council meeting, if we had a template for those, they could be forwarded and go on to the like early minutes of the agenda for you to review. Right? And say, oh, okay, this didn't apply to us, this did apply to us. Oh, wait a minute.
Usually what the liaison does, but you're suggesting that we set something out beforehand to recap that?
Yeah, if if we capture it as part of our minutes, then it was, it's just something that comes to you. And we have instead of going down through each, you know, uh needing the full minutes, we have a decision statement. Right? And that decision statement is very clear without having to go through all the minutes and say, wait a minute, was that last month or was that this month? If if you did that, you could put them online and put tags on them and then you could search for them.
Mm-hmm.
It would be easier to do that way.
Wait, should we put on the minutes to the planning commission or on the minutes, the agenda to say, review decision?
Right. Right, early on as an administrative thing, right? Review any decisions from the council.
And we had talked about getting the minutes from the last council meetings too and vice versa, having them see our minutes before their next meeting. So that, I think that's part of the issue.
Right, so let's let's hold that thought because when we bring the town council in, I'd like to talk to everybody about that and see if we can do a better job at that touch point between the two groups.
Well, and if that's supposed to be kind of a liaison action or
Yeah.
responsibility, I think it'd be good to have a guideline as to what information should be shared. Um, I think things get lost. We we talk about things and we're all really talking good idea people, but they don't get communicated to the town council. And I think that those kinds of things can really fall through the cracks. So if nothing else, just the some checklist for the liaison to talk to the council about or to report to us about what town council talked about.
Can you put liaison responsibility?
Yeah, there's a, there's a file here.
Bill corrected me on that. Yeah, I had written something down and I had spelled liaison wrong off through the document and Phil edited it for me and he sent it back and he corrected my spelling. I know it wasn't right, you know, you just look at it, that doesn't look right, but I'm too busy. Let it go. So now I know how to spell liaison properly. Okay. Um, so the other exercise that I wanted to do is a SWOT analysis. And this is, um, Dan, were you there for the SWOT analysis yet? So SWOT is where you look at strengths, weaknesses, threats and opportunities. Then I'd like to do this in the context of your work. So what do you think? Let's move the parking lot here.
Yeah, just find a empty space.
Um you can put it over here. Okay, so what do you think are the strengths? Where do you find that there are things that really help you get your job done? Right? And are working really well? Where do you think things are slowing you down? Right? We've got this. Don't you like like my weird little graphics here? Um, that's about as graphic as I get. Love the threats. Right, yeah, this this iceberg, right? Iceberg, do you recognize that as an iceberg? Yeah, okay, nobody did either until I explained it. So there's part of the iceberg that is things you can see when it's coming, right? You're you're watching this train ramp happen. It's like, oh, my goodness, it's coming. But there's those unspoken unseen things at the bottom that we don't talk about, that we don't see, that we're not always aware of collectively. But they they're gonna be big detriments to getting the job done. Right? So if you think about doing the comprehensive plan, that's a big task on your plate for this year. Right? What are those things that are going to work really well to help you with your job there? Where are the weaknesses? Where do you need help? Things that aren't working as well? Where are there those bombs that are going to get you? And then where are the opportunities, right? What are the things that um we could really do well? That can help us move everything forward. Okay, so does that, is that clear? Yeah, so I want you to take a few minutes again and sort of break up your activities and your thoughts into these things, into these areas. Strengths, weaknesses, things that are dragging you down, that are hindering you from doing your work. Uh, threats, things that are going to get in your way and really put you off. So for example, if you need approval at some point and not everybody's coming to the table, that's going to push out your dates and things like that, right? Things that you absolutely need that are um sort of potential problems waiting to happen. And then opportunities for you to actually maybe capitalize and do some really good things in the future. So if you know of any of activities that are coming up in terms of planning, of things that we can capitalize on, grant opportunities would be a good one. Right? So I had a meeting with somebody the other day talking about grants for activities and projects in the town. That's an opportunity for us to capitalize on potentially some free money to get some of the things done that we want to get done. Uh, so that's an example of an opportunity.
So are we using one piece of paper for each?
You can do it however you want, just write, uh, you know, the, yes, and then list your stuff underneath it.
Are we doing this over here?
Yeah, individually, unlike we did before.
Are you going to put the stickies up there?
Yeah, I am. And when this is all done, I'm going to write it all up and you'll get a full printout so that you don't have to do any of the write-up. I'm just going to take your collective input and add it to the parts in the strategic plan from the planning commission. Thank you. Bill Lewis, have you been? Sorry, have you been through this exercise before?
Uh, SWOT, SWOT exercise?
Yeah.
Uh, no, but when our class was proposing steps towards the comprehensive plan, we we proposed this, I believe, so. Um, yeah, this is definitely a great exercise.
It's a common exercise and you can do it at all kinds of level. You can take it, we're taking it a bit at the macro level where we're looking at sort of the work to be done. But then you can also do it at a bit of a more micro level when you actually do the point of a comprehensive plan itself, so.
I saw your slides from the town council session in the James Exchange. So
Oh, did you? Uh-huh.
Very informative. Thanks, Nancy.
That's helpful to have that. Okay, another minute to finish up?
I never fasted this time today, but I'm doing the words.
Well, that's okay. So when it comes back, I will, you know, of course, write all these things out for you and you'll have an opportunity to edit and add things that you may have missed. But at least it gives us a a starting point as a draft. Okay, you can keep writing, but Emily, will you collect up what people have done? And let's put them in the columns.
I have a question, but it's, yeah, go ahead. It's bound to be your controversial. How, I think this is the place to raise it, Molly.
I'm just wondering, um, with the comprehensive plan, if it's kind of to near our vision and what we're hoping for our future and things like that. I don't know how to feel about those decisions that are made that were clearly disregarded the planning, the plan that we put together.
Well, I think I think this is this is the reason why we're meeting jointly, right? Because I think both groups need to have visibility. And what we don't want to have done, what we saw in the past, um, I think there was at least some feeling on the loss project that that came in at the last minute and people were unprepared, right? So people should be aware, if if through the planning process, which is why I think these checkpoints are so important for the public, for the town council, for the work that you're doing. So that by the time it gets down, everybody knows, everybody's aware, everybody's on board and we can start aligning things. And then we need to develop a process, a decision-making process whereby we actually use that plan and align to. So that plan should tell us land development and where that should occur and in what context and how, right? And as new development comes through or new proposals come through, all of that should be aligned to the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But everybody has to understand it, at least have a role in it, right? So not everybody's going to agree, it's going to have to be voted on and, you know, all of that stuff. But once it is, it should be something that we're using. The same thing with the strategic plan and priorities, right? If we don't use it, it's just a document.
Well, and if you do a template of sorts for, you know, decisions and things like that, it might benefit being a, did this fall in a comfortable place within our
Right, does it align with our strategic priorities?
Mm-hmm.
Does it align to our comprehensive plan? Right, those are two checkboxes that should be on that application for a decision, right? Where the town council says, okay, because they should have a harder time saying no if there's a bunch of checkboxes and they're all yes, right? So, uh
I mean, people are going to have different opinions about what constitutes a, you know, um following the plan or not following the plan, but
But I think if you if you paint a good vision, right, for the next five years, I mean, most of the people, there are always going to be that bell curve where there's going to be people who hate it. They don't want any changes, they don't want anything to do with it, they want us to stay exactly where we are today. And there's going to be people who want radical change, right? And then there's going to be people who, if they see enough um, benefit to the community, they can get on board. Even if they don't agree, they say, well, I can live with this. Right? And that's what I think we have to, that's the real definition of consensus, right? It's not whether you agree or not.
Yeah.
Can you live with this? Right? Or is there something so fundamentally off that you just say, I can't get on board?
Well, I do feel like it would be a much better exercise to know, you know, people's thoughts about following the comprehensive plan. Just feel how
Well, and you look at some of the documents that we have. I mean, the small area plan is constantly being referenced. Remember back at that small area plan? That was a great plan. You know, I hear that all the time. So that was one of the documents I just came and printed up and it's in my deck because I haven't read that one yet. But that was really well done and people seemed to really uh be on board with it, right? Um, when we did the loss decision, there was the Waukesha Plan and there was another marketing study that was done that some people said, wow, these are really great. They had charrettes with the community and, you know, there was all kinds of community input into that and people feel, felt really good about that, sort of a mixed use kind of view of the tire factory that people said, wow, we could get on board with that. So and the fact that it didn't align, right? Well, if you're a volunteer, like you said, you know, you go to these community things, you capture my input and then you just completely ignore it. That's, that's a blow, right? That's not something that people appreciate. So I think we have to do a better job with communicating and just being realistic, even if not everybody loves it. So I think it's a really good point you made, Molly. I'm glad you raised that. Okay, so let's take a look. Do you guys want to just toss out to me some of your ideas in the uh, in the strength area? We have, like commissioners are passionate about Scottsdale. That's a strength. That really is good. We all sit at the table because we care. Right? And I think sometimes we forget about that when we get into a tussle, right? Whether we agree or not, that's a different issue, but we're all in the seats. We're not getting paid, right? We're here because we care and we want to make a difference. I think that's a really good, um, a good point. Um, creative and talented commissioners, we care about the town. We can learn from each other and grow during each set them. Do you feel that, and and I bring this up because uh, we've been having a bit of discussion about that. Do you feel that you have enough time, that you meet often enough to actually get all the things done that you want to get done collectively?
If I was pressed to be true I, because you you weigh that out with your your personal life and your professional life and all of that. But, um, no, I don't think we have enough time. And I think that quite often things get put off for months because we don't have enough time to kind of create the discussion thing.
Anybody else comment?
Certainly.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree. I think there's a time pressure, like we had enough, but it just feels like, I mean, certainly since someone has gotten involved, everything's taken off. There's so many more.
There's so many more things before us. So, yeah, we've been pretty busy. Um, I also feel like we probably need better use of our time by communicating outside of meetings. Um, coming in prepared, staying focused, I mean, I think, and I also think that having a plan for how to tackle everything that comes up for a parking lot and how to tackle that would be helpful because things come up and we say, hey, what about this? What about that? And then we get diverted and start talking about that, maybe what, what everyone really wants to see is a plan for how we can talk about that in the future since if, if not something that we're really just have like that.
Yeah. Yeah, because I feel like, at least now, and I don't know how you feel, Dan, I don't feel like we have enough time to, to tackle all the things that are coming up. And I don't know if it's been different in the past because I'm new in my seat. But, um, there's a lot of complicated stuff going on. There's a lot of things that need, there are a lot of things that need updating and, uh, too few hands to, to get it all done sometimes.
I have to admit that getting the website put together is like a big thing for me. I feel like that that might bring some clarity and having more tools to, you know, to work on the town stuff.
Yeah.
Just having a clear way of finding out information or grabbing like a document.
Yeah.
Or whatever. And it's no one's fault. Obviously websites are a very tricky thing and you have to be on top of it. But if you can reinvent the wheel every once in a while, like I think government services is doing.
Yeah.
Then I think that's a positive thing.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was you, Molly, who said the other day about, did we have an area that's just for town staff? Right? You have to have a login and password to get in where you get to some of the information that's more confidential or that isn't available in the public. Or you can have some dialogue there, um.
Like an internal website.
Yes, like an Intranet, right? Basically, that, um, and I think we need to bring that up with the civic club people, right? Is can we set that up so that we have a privileged-based hierarchy on the website? Where some things that if you're a planning commission or if you're town council, especially when things are in progress, but aren't baked enough to share yet, right? You can post them there and say, hey, I put this out here, guys. Look at it. See what you think, right? Instead of just doing emails and then we have a six or eight deep thread of emails that sometimes are, for me, mind blowing is I gotta go through and trace who said what here. Um, and you could actually maybe have comments on, on the document or something like that would be super helpful, I think. So, uh, we should look at that Javier. Um, and so I think one of those threats, so lack of resources, lack of time, right? That's what we've been talking about. That's one of those things down here that we don't often talk about or see that really get in the way of getting our jobs done. We're too few people with too many things on our plate. And that's why I think we need to be more focused. I think these strategic priorities also will help us focus a little bit. If it's not aligned, um, if the priorities are not aligned, should we be even taking this on right now? Maybe not. So those are the kinds of things we have to work on. Okay, so it's seven o'clock. The council's probably going to come in and we'll do some work on those checkpoints. And then I have some additional exercises for us in terms of getting goals and objectives collectively. Okay, so let's take a break for a few minutes and come back like in five when everybody rejoins us. We can. Um, I talked about it at the last council meeting and I'd like to see some very explicit things about decorum in our rules of procedure, right? Yeah, we have to be careful and we should have a larger discussion on this. I'll put it on the parking lot. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll put a, uh, because we've had a lot of discussion, I've gotten a lot of material. I just got a lot of stuff from the, uh, town lawyer about that. And I think there's different rules for the public and for each other. So, um.
Oh, sure.
I haven't gone through that all yet, but let's have this done.
Okay. Yeah. Planning Commission. Been knowing updates for our, and that they've been specifically. And somebody named Jim Boling has been driving in and he seems pretty well informed.
Yeah, I don't know where he lives.
Especially on a maybe.
I'm just wondering if. The same Jim Boling because he's very informed about zoning ordinance and. This whole email chain. Yeah, right. But like covenant laws and all sorts of stuff, so.
Is he a real estate lawyer, Mr. Boling?
No, he's, Ron, do you remember his history? I think he's been working in the county and the city in various roles, covering the whole. I don't know if he knows real estate.
He knows about.
Yeah, this person.
Now, do we have to close out of this meeting?
Yeah, so.
So does somebody want a motion for a close?
I made a motion of meeting, to adjourn the meeting. In all favor.
And then the same for the next school.
Right, we have to open like we normally do. Okay, so it's missed.
But, I mean.
An email.
That's okay. We're just taking a break for a few minutes.
Nice.
You didn't eat before you changed? Did everybody else eat or did just none? Should we get a pizza for the people who didn't eat?
Oh, yes, please.
We have a pizza, come on.
Yes.
Yeah, if they won't pay for it, I'll pay for it, so.
Well, please.
Yeah, so what kind of pizza do you guys want?
Uh, Supreme, veggie, veggie.
We'll get two, one veggie, one supreme. Is that what we're got?
Perfect.
Is that, everybody else, will you eat that? Will you eat that? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I need to call for that. Okay.
Whatever time you guys came in.
All right.
You want some chicken scratch and digress?
Eddie, I, I heard that Eddie's not coming. Um, Alex should be here. Okay, so you have to clock when we start. Okay, so, um, does somebody want to bring this town council session? I believe so, yes. Do we have a second?
Second. Or actually, I was not making a motion.
Okay, just move in the meeting. Okay, I forgot the rules. Okay, at seven oh six, we're bringing the meeting to order. Okay, so this is an open session, town council and planning commission. Okay, so, so just to catch up, the town council and mayor, we've been going through, um, roles and responsibilities that the planning commission, like we did with the town council when we went through our session. And we also, uh, did a SWOT analysis on the work that's coming this year on what the strengths are, where we might have potential pitfalls as we move forward. We talked a lot about communication, about, a little bit about process, about maybe formalizing some of the ways we communicate. So I wanted to, uh, get and talk about the checkpoints. So if we bring back, let's see, this one. These were some of the roles and responsibilities of the planning commission. And there are a number of things on here. Uh, a number of commissioners talked about developing the comprehensive plan, which has to be done this year. Um, we talked about how to respect the work, like how are we going to, once the comprehensive plan is in place, how are we going to actually align to it, make sure we're all on board with it as projects or zoning requests or things come through where we don't have as much, uh, I won't say confusion, but maybe disagreement over what should be done and how. If we have, I think, checkpoints in a process, as we move through the comprehensive planning process, we might be better aligned as a council and planning commission. And when new projects come up, we can see clearly how they align to the comprehensive plan and make better decisions. So those are the kinds of checkpoints we talked about, formalizing a process of communication. Um, only if you could write checkpoints on here and let's get some thoughts down. Homeschool, at work. Yeah, handwriting. Um, okay, so, uh, formalized communications. So we talked about that. We talked about, and Bill and I have talked about this before, sort of templatizing our decisions. So that it's not just embedded in the meeting minutes, but there's actually a decision template. I brought that up at the last council meeting.
Let me ask a question about that. Is, um, does Robert's rule of order cover minutes?
I don't know. In fact, there are Robert's rules in plain English.
The reason why I asked is because, um.
Can you put? Decisions?
I've seen, um, from other boards how they put together their rules. And one of the things that it mentions is nothing should exist outside of the minutes. Your minutes should be the complete and only record of a meeting. So I don't know what's, I just.
Okay, here's a section on guide for writing, thirty-five to thirty-seven. One of the things that was interesting as I was going, so I told you that the, uh, the town lawyer sent a bunch of, uh, uh, a bunch of readings out and to communicate to us all about when I brought up rules of procedure. And one of the things in there was that Robert's rules is, there's a formal Robert's rules and an informal Robert's rules. And the informal Robert's rules can be used for small groups. And so you have to like figure out which of the Robert rules you're going through. So it's a lot more complicated than I thought. Was anybody else aware of that? Secretary of Minutekeeping, contents of minutes. So yes, Robert's rules does talk about keeping minutes. Um, but this is just one potential, uh, templatized decision. Uh, so Robert's rules does talk about it, but it doesn't, uh, doesn't have some specifics. We can dig into that. Um, I think the idea of, um, putting things on the website with searchable tags is really helpful. We talked about having potentially an Intranet that is password protected. So as work is getting done, rather than sending it through email and you have these big email chains, you post a document and you can have somebody and say, okay, go look at this document, go edit this document without all the email thread and things like that. Um, what else would help us? We talked about a documented process, right? So this past meeting, uh, on the, is it Radley proposal that came through, the zoning proposal that came through, right? Uh, when that came through, there was a question, what did the planning commission say? Did it go through planning commission? And there was a little bit of back and forth. Molly weighed in. Thankfully she was there. Um, but we don't have a good, at least I don't, as a new person coming in, have an idea of if somebody is rezoning, what that process is, right?
And with the things that are coming in from planning commission, be very clearly marked. This is a recommendation or, you know, here, this is being decided in town council, this is, you know, and the decision from planning.
Absolutely. That's, I think, would be super helpful. And then once the decision is made, something flows back to planning commission. Say, this is the way the town council voted on it and this is why. If the town council overrides the decision, the council should provide a rationale for why that happened, right? And that way we all stay in the loop. What are some other ideas for checkpoints between the groups that you think might be helpful? We do, we talked about the role of the liaison and bringing communication back and forth. But I, I don't know. I like it down on paper. For me, I think it's easier than just sort of hearing a report out. That way I can go back and look at it later and think about it.
I think having some sort of guideline or, you know, I like the idea of the template just because it will have all the points you need to cover and make sure that you've thought about that or translated that into the document.
Right.
Um, I think that would be super helpful and I think it would be helpful for us to know the rationale when they go against our recommendation, why that might be. Um, we can learn, you know, some of that. Uh, we can also understand, uh, you know, and, and that it's being considered.
Right, just, well, and the other thing we've talked about is having, so if you're talking about how things align to the comprehensive plan, having that checkbox to say, does this align to the comprehensive plan? Does this align to our strategic priorities? Does this, you know, a few of those basic questions? Because if it doesn't, then we should probably look more closely at those types of, of decisions than the ones that actually are easy and do align with the work that we just did, right? So, um, checkboxes uh, for alignment to plan and priorities.
I think a lot of times, if council, uh, votes in a, in a different direction than what planning commission proposed, putting the reason down might be hard. I, I mean, it could be six different reasons. But, you know, for, you know.
Yeah, but we should be able to sum up, right? I mean, we should be able to articulate at least the big ones, let's say. So for, for, if we go back to this last decision, one of the points was, this had, uh, been languishing for how many years? Twenty-five years. It was supposed to be done. It wasn't done. So that was one of the reasons, right? It needed to be, there was a feeling that it needed to be corrected because it hadn't been done properly in the past, right? Uh, another one was that there was no, there was no evidence of any severe objections from the planning commission, at least that we could tell. Um, so there were a couple of those high-level things that I think we could put down to. So there were a couple of those high-level things that I think we could put down to say, okay, this is why we overwrote it now. Maybe that would cause us to do some lessons learned to say, okay, maybe in the future, we would like this to come forth, or this to be more clear, or something like that, right? If we had that, that kind of flow through.
There's something I was gonna say, because there's, there's kind of two things in terms of us communicating back and forth with the Planning Commission and the council. One is very active minutes where, both ways, where kind of a fast turnaround for what happens in the Town Council in the minutes version that goes to the final commission, same way, planning commission to the Town Council. In other words, if we think about it, it's helpful for both to kind of see the breadth or the width of the things that happen. The other part of it is, is it being the liaison role, is you wouldn't, you're not gonna go through all the minutes, but you want to highlight certain things or think of things.
Right, because not all the minutes are relevant.
Yeah, so, but it kind of needs to be both. I mean, to go back to Molly's point, on the one hand, you want the other commission to, you know, want the planning commissioner, the Town Council to know, here's the breadth, you know, all the, all the things. On the other hand, a selective look at a few of them that really aren't supported, because, and they both are relevant. Because sometimes if you, to make Molly's point, if you opt to say, okay, I'm gonna report on these three, well, maybe the fourth one was something that somebody else wanted me to talk about and I didn't talk about it. But it would have been in the minutes. So it kind of needs to be both in some way. And it's, and it also requires more work of the staff because it's going back and forth in a quicker way.
Well, we should put a little more thought into this in how we do the minutes. And I've talked to Javier too, about having even a template for those to where he can do them more quickly, where we can get them more quickly. And maybe, you know, each thing that needs like Planning Commission's attention has a checkbox in it, or another committee's attention, if it needs to go to government services or something like that. That, I think, would be helpful, right? Because then you would know, you could take your minutes and say, oh yeah, I remember this was something that I said I was going to talk to Planning Commission about. So I think it's something that we could look into and maybe experiment with a little bit. I don't know how you all feel about that. The other thing we talked about, Emily, if you could capture this, tracking action items. We have a lot of action items and we agree on them that night. And then we leave the next morning and we go into our busy lives and we, we forget, right? It's, it's a natural thing to forget. And I think we need to come back, we had started to track them in government services a little bit for a while. I don't know if you're, if you all are still doing that, but I think whenever we have an open item, we need to sort of put it and then make sure we're following up on it on the next meeting. And when we look at that and we prepare, we say, oh my gosh, we forgot we're gonna do this. We recently had a thing on the, what was it, hazard, natural hazard management plan or something? We had three actions we were gonna do for them, one of them was planting trees and things like that. If we don't capture that action item somewhere, we're not gonna be planting trees, right? We're going to forget, we're not gonna budget for planting trees for erosion control along Mink Creek, Mink Creek. So we need, I think we need to do a better job. Any other comments on that?
I agree. I think that as intelligent people who are looking to better the town, we're all gonna have kind of ex parte ideas or things that are maybe not within the agenda. And I'd hate to lose those kinds of suggestions or questions or whatever.
Some of the things I think communication, I think your website is gonna be, I think, it's gonna solve a lot of problems, but it will stop, yes. And I suggested this a while back, this, and I don't know how long it's gonna be, but I think all agendas for the Commission, the Town Council, the service, and the ARB, if they're active, they should be shared amongst all of them. And all the minutes should be sent along, amongst them. Because you don't have to, you don't have to search them out. But send them directly to the people and we know what's going on. And then send the minutes directly to know what's going on. That would help the liaison too, because, you know, the liaison is going, that's their function. But if they're not there, or if they don't remember, it's right there. So I think those meetings, everything should be, communication should be shared. So, and, and it's like, some people know things and other people don't, I don't think that's what I.
Right, there should be more transparency. I agree though, but I think, and, and this is where the transparency becomes a problem. This is one of those things, if we go back to that SWOT, that SWOT analysis with the iceberg, right? When we, when we don't capture, we don't send out, we don't know who to send out, who has interest or who has not. There's a lot of things that gets filled in about why didn't I get this, right? And these sort of things develop and take on a life of their own, right? They get into almost a conspiracy theory about why this stuff wasn't shared more broadly and things. And sometimes it's just a simple error, it's just, I got so busy and I forgot. So, but I would, I would suggest that maybe, and maybe we could look at, Javier, maybe we could take an action item for the discussion with Civic Plus people. Because I find it also, if we are all sending documents via email, oh my gosh, I have a really hard time tracking it all. But if we had a repository and you got an alert, let's say, that says, a text that says, oh, there's a new document up in Planning Commission on the next revision of the planning document. Oh, okay, then I can write myself a note and go get it when I'm ready to. And I don't have to have a bunch of threaded emails about discussion going back and forth, which sort of further complicates our lives from a process standpoint.
That's why I thought the internet might be really.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, you know, the website does offer the minutes and the agendas and all of that, but you have to download the documents. I mean, I can't imagine any kind of.
Well, I can't, I can never get them.
I download them and they don't come up, in my view.
At the top of the screen, and then you're.
I have the same problem.
Yeah, so. I hope so, yeah. I don't think it was something that you would.
Yeah, yeah. And the, the public needs this, yeah, too. I mean, this is our government, they have a right to.
Absolutely, absolutely. It should be completely transparent out there, right? Once they, once they get to a state where we're ready to share. But there's also that internal state where we're just talking about, maybe discussing, where you don't need to share it yet, so.
While I'm thinking about it, I, I feel like on the website, the the calendar only has some council meetings and no other like committee meetings. I just feel like it would be helpful to have all of it, or.
Meeting schedule on the website.
Close Facebook, and I hate that I have to go on Facebook to find out what's going on.
No, I hear you. I don't go, I don't have an account, so.
I stopped because it's just so awful. I don't think, I mean, part of my show, I don't think there's anything going on, and it's.
Okay, I wanna, I. Yeah, and we talked about, they have something for news and for events and things right up there. I think the website, and one of the reasons we went with this vendor, just so you know, is because they've done this for many, many municipalities. So they have a lot of experience on what the, the public needs, what town councils need, et cetera. So I think it's gonna be, I'm sorry?
Are they going to be maintaining?
Uh, we will, but they have an interface that's easier to do that work. So, and we'll be able to hopefully have people who are content editors. So somebody on your side or multiple people can edit Planning Commission content and take that and have that responsibility without it all just coming through wherever it comes through right now. So should be a lot easier to maintain than it is, but again, not perfect. Okay, let's wrap this up on checkpoints. Any other thoughts or ideas on how we might improve coordination, communication process between our groups? The Town Council and Planning Commission? No? Go ahead, Lisa.
I think we should probably have an annual strategy session, check in like this.
Yeah, that's okay. Annual joint session. I like that idea. Coincident with the, the annual meeting of the Town Council or the annual meeting of Planning Commission. Those are different timeframes though, right? Is it your annual meeting in the spring? Do I recall that? That's what I thought. So yours is fiscal year and on Town Council is calendar year, right? So they don't, they don't sync up, but that doesn't, doesn't make a difference.
Yeah. I think it should have something to do with when the new people come on from, you know, the election.
Election, right.
Once in a two bit of amount of time to give those people a chance to get their feet wet and get their beer.
Right, that's, I think that's why Town Council is in like January, February timeframe, right? A seat change, right? I read it somewhere recently. I thought it was, I don't think so. I thought it was in July.
I think it should assume July because that's when our returns renew, so.
Well, it's, it's always, it has June of whatever.
Might have been in the charter, would have been, would have been.
Terms ended in June. Different years, yeah. So then you have any, when we need to shorten that, or as you said, you get new members.
Until the last couple of years, so the, the Town Council did too. So that's why everything is updated.
Right, so we'll have to decide when is the appropriate time.
Yeah, to have an annual meeting, those groups coming together. I don't think it necessarily has to line up with our official annual meetings.
Yeah, and then I can stress, you're thinking of like an annual meeting for twenty years, but I think you're just thinking, you're using not with that connotation, an annual meeting, just you all, right? Maybe you call us.
Right. Okay, so I talked about the importance of a plan, about making this plan a living, breathing thing, right? We, we're taking the time, Town Council took an entire Saturday, you're giving up your Friday evening. We don't want this to just like sit there. And as I was going through some grant information the other day, I came across a couple of things that I thought was interesting. Is that when, when you prepare grants, and I think we need to do more of that, the grants are looked at in a more favorable light. The applications that you submit are looked at in a more favorable light if you have a strategic plan in place. And the reason that is, is because you've got a lot of people or municipalities who are just like shooting arrows at the dartboard, right? They're just throwing them out there to see what kind of money they can get. And so the people who are reviewing the applications on the other side are looking at it to say, wait a minute, is this somebody that's just asking for money, hoping? It's like, you know, whenever you post a job, there are people who will just apply to everything. Or is this really something that you've thought very carefully about? And that you're really strategic in your thinking and it aligns with plans that you've already put on paper? So this is where having this strategic plan is really important. Whether that's new development coming through and we have something to look at in terms of priorities. I go back to something that you've talked about in the past, past Meredith, about having more affordable housing, having, serving those in the community that maybe aren't as fully served as they could be, right? If we have these priorities and we have things coming through and we're actually utilizing them, we can do better alignment. And I think that will put us all on the same page. So, so these grant applications, if it's part of an integrated portfolio of objectives, is looked at more favorably, right? The same thing if new development comes through, a proposal comes through. If it aligns with our strategy, with our comprehensive plan, we should look at it more favorably. The same way grant applications are done, right? So I just wanted you to be aware of that, about how some of the other uses of these things are and how we can make this a living, breathing document instead of just a documentation exercise that goes on the website that basically few people are going to read. Are there any other thoughts about how we can use this to our strategic advantage?
Well, it's gonna help with the health plan.
Sure.
Well, it helps us fly the brand or to the form. I'm not clear on the question.
Yeah, so, so I briefed you all on the strategic plan. We talked about a list of strategic assets. We talked about roles and responsibilities, both on Planning Commission and on Town Council's side. We talked about strategic priorities, and we'll go over those again. But we don't want to lose the focus. If Town Council, because we, I've heard this said more than once. If we knew what Town Council wanted, it would help us make better decisions, right? And that's not just in this group, but outside of this group. But the strategic plan is a way of Town Council telling you, these are things that are important to us, right? So.
Is that true though? Because we write a strategic.
Yeah, this is the strategic plan for the town and the Town Council. Comprehensive plan is different, right? You all write the comprehensive plan, but it should align with the strategic plan, which is why you really need to be familiar with strategic plan, right?
Yes, so.
I briefed you all on it, right? At the meeting the other day, remember? We went through it, but we do have copies of it that we can share. Yeah, we do. And you should all, it should be something that's sort of like, that we carry around to every meeting, right?
Is it like a mission statement?
It's a vision statement, a mission statement, instead of strategic priorities, yeah. Yeah, I love that. And in fact, there used to be some copies here on the desk, but I carry it around with me.
Maybe I even.
I don't think I've ever seen this document. And we got a packet of documents from, oh, you were, I was the last one. Right, but no, no, I meant like prior to just like within the last month, but yeah. Oh, I mean, I.
We, we just did this.
Yeah, this is brand new and I just briefed at the last Planning Commission meeting. So I took everybody through this, right, if you remember.
Yeah, so we got that, because that's, that's what Town Council came up with. But I think as part of the comprehensive plan, we have to go out and get feedback from the townsfolk and get their consents as also. Now it's probable that they're going to align with what council came up with. But I think the comprehensive plan, I mean, in theory, could differ.
And what do we do when they differ?
Well.
What's the role of Town Council if there's no alignment?
Well, I question what's the role of the Planning Commission, you know? Because I do feel like a lot of the time, the recommendations are, in my opinion, it doesn't even feel like they're being considered when they get to Town Council. And, you know, if there's a new strategic plan that was just created, I think, you know, now we do have to go back and make sure, or try to ensure as best we can, that the comprehensive plan aligns with that document. But, you know, I don't think we should be acting like, you know, this is something we should have been doing a long, which is what I was reacting to. Because it was, it sounded like, you guys should know the strategic plan, why don't you know this meaning? I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm not a town. So I'm, this is, yeah, completely new to me.
Right. So, and, and I don't know, did we ever have a strategic plan before this? Anybody with?
We did, yeah, we met. We did this same thing, it was five or six years ago, and it was, that's kind of what drove. it was, that's kind of what drove what we did the last two or three years.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it should be done coincidentally with this, the comprehensive plan every five years, right? A strategic plan should be good, it's usually a five-year vision, right? Around there, some people do it to ten, but I think it's really hard to project what the world's gonna look like ten years from now. So I think a five-year marker is good, um. And it isn't, oh, sorry, it is a question about what happens. So that strategic planning, you know, was an open session, people from the public, some people came. Uh, not a huge amount, but that happens a lot, right? Where you have meetings and a lot of people don't show. So it's a difficult question about how the public needs to weigh in on that. I think we all could think about that more. Meredith, do you, did you have a point?
Well, not, not so much on this, but what Shannon was just saying. And I mean, I guess it just does come down to better communication.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're doing this, but I, I am feeling a, a large sense of frustration.
So, for example, just because it's the freshest one in my head, the one with, um, the rezoning of the Radley property. A lot of times when we get the recommendation, it's just a simple yes or no.
Right.
Planning commission said yes, or planning commission said no, and we don't hear any of the reasoning behind it or anything like that. So this time we actually did hear the reasoning behind it. From what I know was that you went no because she had no, kind of didn't have a duck in her own yet, you know, and, and didn't really present all of that much.
Well, there's no clear vision.
Clear about it because it was a twenty-five-year-old decision by town council that was never ratified.
So we, we, that's about that one, but.
And, and it was probably a bad example, but it's, it's the one that's been close estimated.
I totally know on that because so many people came out against it and I was really surprised. You know, I didn't think it was a very big deal and I didn't vote a yes on it. But then people showed up to the public hearing and they were like, no, like we don't want you to make everything along Valley Street a commercial entity, it needs to be a mix. So I'm like, okay, people feel very passionately about this. So I'm going to do that. So that's why I voted no on that.
I voted no because it was twenty-five years old and how can that be relevant to now?
Right.
Um, without understanding what the need was, why was she applying for that? Because she doesn't have a commercial entity that she's dealing with there.
And yeah.
That she wants to sell when she thought she could have had a clear time selling it.
Okay, so I don't want to get too much in the words because we need to move forward, but it's, it's a very beautiful of where, and that's exactly why Shannon, where I had talked about this templatized sort of decision. Because if we have something in front of us that says, this is why the planning commission voted no, right? It's not just, well, we didn't have enough information or there wasn't, you know, a strong enough process. I, I personally needed more information and the absence of information, I didn't want to hold that up. But I also will point out, when people come, there's always going to be strong opinions on both sides. And we need to, it's, it's what I told, I've told the council and other members of government services when I was working there. I want to be able to, when somebody stops me on the street and said, my gosh, why did you vote for that? Right? That I have a very clear, repeatable answer that's grounded in a rational way that we made a decision, right? We made it for reason, A, B, and C. Now you may not agree with that, but that's why. And that if Meredith or Molly or anybody else gets asked that question, they give the same answer, that we have continuity in how we communicate. Now, if you vote differently, obviously there's going to be a different set of, of explanations there, but, um, we don't want to be unclear with the public, especially if we're voting something that is not necessarily popular with any group of people.
I don't think that's necessarily, um, necessary, necessarily, necessary, um. I think it's okay, like, I, I don't think we need to have a template answer. Like if you vote no for something and somebody asks you why you voted no, I think it's okay if your reason for, but I, I think be honest. But sometimes you might vote no for something for a completely different reason than I voted no. And I don't think we need to necess, I think it's okay to say, this is why I voted no. And if they come up to me and ask me why I voted no, it doesn't necessarily have to align with yours, I don't think.
That's, that's true in some cases, but I think there's also a process that should be adhered to. We all heard from the public, like you had a statement at the end of the loss that I thought was very well done. I voted no on this, not because I'm opposed to growth, but because this wasn't a good plan for A, B, and C reasons. Right? There's no way that, there's no reason that that can't be articulated as part of the rationale. I think everybody who voted that night listened to the public, right? And, and that weighed in. So you can say, listen, a lot of people were there, two to one, it was this, right? So I think having a process, we went through a process and we had these things. This is what came out of the process, I think is really helpful, okay?
Who was filling out this template though? Like who gets to make the decision to write down, this is why everyone voted no?
Well, it should be, it should be a consensus and we talked about consensus, not that you all agree, but that you can live with what's put down. Right? So if Meredith had, well, this didn't serve this population that I believe we should be concerned with, that should go on. There's no reason why it can't go on there. And if I'm, I say no for a different reason.
Sure, but I don't think we always, well, not just agree, but I don't think we always give a rationale for voting, you know?
It was pretty clear in the minutes from that meeting about the Radley property.
Yeah.
Use that as an example, but it was pretty clear there was a reason why.
Right, because it's not always, you don't always say, I'm going to know because it was from the D and I'm voting yes because of the S Y N Z. I mean, is that something we want to start doing?
It's something to consider. It's not something, these are up here as possibilities for having better communication between our groups, between us and the public. We don't have to do any of this. But it is something that might be helpful, something for you to think about, right? To have subsequent conversations there.
So. I know like Airbnb is a very big thing in the past as far as, you know, but when you give your recommendation, why some of them are approved and why some of them aren't, and it seems like there's no rationale, like my rationale is always, are we losing affordable housing by allowing it to become an Airbnb? The switch? No, we are not losing affordable housing. You know, uh, what's his name, who lives next to the, um, gas station? Anyway, are we losing affordable housing? No, they need to keep their house because ten weeks out of the year, they're going to be living there, but they're gonna rent it out other ways. So we're not losing housing. A great apartment that serves as affordable housing downtown, we already are lacking on that.
But that opinion isn't necessarily true because you, you say no when I will give, um, Johnson. Awesome, thank you. The ability to, then it has to either.
No, we voted yes on theirs.
Right, but you, but then you took away the, from the puzzle market.
No, we didn't, because that's their house that they continue to live in.
Yeah.
They're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna rent it out to somebody with a one-year lease because at different points during the year, they need to go home.
Okay, I don't want to get into specifics in the weeds here, folks, we're gonna need.
But what I'm saying is like, we can share.
Productive, and I don't want to close it down, but we have a lot to get through. If you want to stay later, I'm okay.
But anyway, like I don't mind sharing my rationale.
We've wanted more providing this from council on how you guys, you know, perceive this, so it's something to continue talking about.
Well, and this is why we need checkpoints, right? So we know what each body is thinking, right? We're voting this way because we hear from you that this is important. If serving underserved, um, populations in the community is an important priority, it should be articulated through there, right? And there should be some objectives in there. That tells you how the council feels, right? It gives you some indication.
I think we do need to come together and go back to this book, this mentioned here about comprehensive plan. Because I need to have a planning commission create a comprehensive plan and they even tell the council doesn't.
Exactly.
Right. I, I really, because I've got a, like, two, uh, comprehensive plans. And, uh, pretty much we follow them mostly what was done all along. So it, so would be good for the town council to know, what are your priorities and what are you looking at ahead of time? So if you're creating something that's, that's not supported or you're not creating something that they do support, you know, it'd be good to know, uh, what's your priorities on?
And that's why we talked early on that we would try to get a list of the project milestones where there can be some discussion, both at the public level, the town council level, where people can weigh in, so you don't get to the end stage of developing something and find out nobody's aligned and there's lots of confusion, right?
My frustration is you guys developed a strategic plan without, and I didn't even know that process was happening. Like, it's gotta flow both ways, like.
Well, that's what this is all about.
Right, but you've already developed that strategic plan without any input from us.
That's true.
That's what I'm saying, like, I, I don't want to create some comprehensive plan that isn't in alignment with what town council wants, that's not my objective. But I feel like there's no consideration or little consideration flowing the other way from the town council to the planning commission. Like you guys do stuff and I feel blindsided by it.
Well, you weren't at the meeting, that, that was why Eileen went and presented it.
Right, you guys have already, she was presenting something that was already done.
But we did, it, yeah.
But I didn't even know that, I missed one meeting and she, and I knew it was happening.
Okay, so I did.
We didn't, we didn't do it in conjunction with, and like it, it basically came down to the town council's vision statement and the town council, you know? I, I, I think a lot of what was in it didn't necessarily need input from planning commission. I mean, the whole, the whole plan from the beginning, when we, when we started the strategic planning was for town council to do one and then for town council to do one in conjunction with you guys about the stuff that allows, and that's what this is. So we had that first meeting with just town council and then this one with town council and planning commission. That, that was, that was the plan the whole time.
With input from us.
That's tonight, that's why you're here. This is where we're gonna get to.
But that's great, but I didn't know that that's what the intention of this meeting was, with the whole craft, strategic plan.
Okay, and it, so, and, and this is, this is a point of communication failure, right? Because had you been at that last meeting, you would have known that. And because you were, something fell through the cracks and I'm not assigning blame, it happens all the time. And this is why we need these checkpoints to be in place so that we can all be more informed, right? I mean, that's, it's difficult. I'm sure emails went out, right?
Well, we, we talked about it leading up to it, we, we said that we wanted to get together with council, but I think I didn't expect that town council was going to be doing that type of strategic plan. I didn't envision that. I thought it was going to be more like, how do we work together type thing?
That's what I thought this was going to be, like, how do we work better together? And that, right, we're doing that. But it's not, I didn't know that this was in sort of of a larger strategic.
Well, and it is in, in the purview of the town council to do a strategic plan, right? That, in, in the same way, it's, uh, in the purview of a planning commission to do the comprehensive plan.
That, my frustration is.
You didn't know.
That, that things are happening and there's lack of communication and I do constantly, this is not the first time feel blindsided by it and I'm just really frustrated with that. I'm tired of it happening and I'm, I am very happy that we're doing this, but I feel like this stuff has to improve and I've said over and over again, this is not the first time I've voiced my frustration about the lack of communication and it doesn't get better.
Well, this is why we're all at the table, this is why we have some idea of checkpoints. Some of these checkpoints, we should try and see if they help, right? We have to do something about the problem. So I think this is a, an acknowledgement, a collective acknowledgement of that. I would say most of the town council feels the same way. So clearly there's no mal-intent, it just needs to be solved and we have some ideas, let's ruminate on those and move forward. Yeah, Molly, last, last thing on this topic, because we need to get through the other things, go ahead.
Okay, why don't you go ahead? I'm gonna just take it.
Okay.
I, I mean, maybe the strategic plan was, first of all, make sure that our council has some machine. Because it was, it's just functional, just like the planning commission, we got different people sat working together. So hopefully we're working together and then you guys figure like you're working together and once you guys are working together, then we can all work together. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, it is an effort to get everybody on the same page, right? But there's no guarantee it's gonna work and we all have a role. So let's go through, because some of the aspect of the strategic plan will become a little bit more apparent too. Uh, was that, that presentation should have been attached to your, um, agenda, right, Lisa?
Don't remember.
Okay, I don't know, but it should have been.
I remember seeing it when I was at the town council meeting, but I remember it was attached to agenda, but, um, maybe you can share that with us.
Yeah, okay, all right, um. And we can do that probably before we leave. Javier, is it possible to get like a half a dozen copies of the strategic plan? Do you have a copy of it? Yeah, you can do that and then everybody can have it before they leave. Okay, so why don't we, while we're doing that, and Javier, I'll help you, why don't we take five minutes, get your pizza, decompress a bit and we'll come back in a few minutes, okay? And we're gonna talk about the strategic priorities and some objectives.
How's everybody?
Where'd you go again?
Puerto Rico.
Nice.
We did, uh, a couple nights and one night, but I wouldn't know, but we did, yeah, it's a joke, yeah. We didn't actually go in the fourth, but the town was a lot beautiful. Right. My friend Loby lives down in the port of Vegas.
How hot is it this time of year?
Sometimes it's a merit, it's helpful just to do, uh, no, helpful just to nod.
Yes.
So Mr. Lewis will make sure you get a copy of the strategic plan too. Yeah, it was sent out before. That's, but Javier just sent it out again, and he's printing out hard copies for you. I'll see you all have a hard copy.
I have to, I have to admit that it was not presented as what it is. Like, when you were going through it at the meeting, it wasn't clear to me. I thought you were talking about initiative, what we could implement in the future.
That's what we're talking about tonight. There's no initiative in the strategic plan, right now. It's a set, it, it ends with a set of strategic priorities and a set of principles on how we're gonna work together. And then tonight. Tonight, we're gonna talk about initiative, and a good one, and I'll bring it up later, is like your idea about a walkable town and having a blinking crosswalks. Right? That's the kind of initiative that you wanna capture in here.
Yeah, I think so.
And we might not be able to make it happen, but we can move in that direction, right?
So I think it's to be clear that any construction of new, you know, electric fuel or whatever, has to incorporate some participation in our walkability. It's not what we were hoping to do.
And when you get that project before you, you should say, how does it align to our strategic priorities?
Yeah, well, that's
Does it, does it address this accessibility for all? Is, I think, one of the principles and, or the priorities. Does it push that forward for the community? If it doesn't, does it do something else? Does it do any of these things? If it doesn't do any of these things, is it really the right thing for us, right? Okay. Good break. Everybody's got a more full stomach. You always work better when you're not angry, we call it in our house. All right, so I'm gonna continue. O G F N. Is anybody familiar with this acronym?
No.
It's a framework that's commonly used to talk about objectives, goals, strategies, and measures, right? So it's a formal model to organize that thinking in a really tight and comprehensive way. So the framework, it starts with broad objectives. It defines then fixed and measurable goals, right? If you can't measure it, it's very difficult to say whether it was successful or not. Contains strategies. There's always options about how you might go about things. So it can contain strategies on how you might foresee and measures to monitor progress. So the framework looks something like this. Where you start, build to be a high-level objective. Define some goals, the stepping stones to achieve that objective. Strategies are choices that you make in achieving that objective. And measures. So measures are in terms of output, which tends to be quantifiable. Right? We created three X Y Z things this year. And what is the outcome, which tends to be more qualitative? We enhanced our objective of being a more walkable town would be an outcome, right? Something that you don't necessarily count or measure quantitatively, but that you can tell you made progress towards your objective. That's okay. So I wanna talk a little bit about that in terms of our priorities. So Shannon, you were asking, as part of the strategic plan, the town council, and you'll see in your hard copy, there's a page where these are listed, and it looks like this. Right? It's a circle page, and it has all of these objectives laid out. So the first one is to improve sound government practices. To foster smart growth. And we keep talking about sustainable growth, smart growth. What does that mean? And so I'd like to have a little bit of a dialogue on that. Promote tourism and a thriving economy was another priority. Cultivate community connections. This is one of the things that makes us a great little town, is the fact that we can walk around and meet our neighbors and connect with other people. Protect and promote the natural environment. And I think we all have plenty of information about that, and implement accessibility for all. And this was really a broad priority, and I thought it was really well done, the way we all came about this. But talking about a full suite of services for everyone, and that included not just the community at large, but ADA and accessibility for people who have a disability, for youth, for elderly, for children, and for, even for pets. Right? So when we think about accessibility for all, we need to think very broadly. And when you think about the comprehensive plan and what that might mean for a comprehensive plan, how do we factor those kinds of things in? How do we allow for wheelchair or a walker type of access to our strategic assets, which are listed further up in the presentation? So I think Dan actually made a really good point when he and I took a walk down to the fishing dock. And he said, the last comprehensive plan, we were, really weren't thinking about that kind of access, accessibility for all that broadly. So one of the challenges for the planning commission, when you take and look at these priorities, is to say, okay, what kinds of things are we going to look for in our comprehensive plan that will sort of align with that priority? Does that make sense? Yeah, and are any questions about the, the six priorities that are listed? Agree, disagree? Do they make sense?
These priorities? I mean, I think we could save this exercise going forward and use this every year. I don't think this has to change.
But to Dan's point, right, it did change from the last time we looked at it. Right? Did we look at the last comprehensive plan with a real broad lens on accessibility for all? Did we have plans in there for wheelchair access, for parking lot access, parking spaces for people with mobility challenges and things like that? Signs, you know, for various populations, are they right, you know? It reminds me of places in Wisconsin that have stop signs at car level and at low level. And I say, well, why are those stop signs down here? Snowmobiles in the winter time have to adhere to the same traffic laws. So they have two stop signs so that the visibility is very apparent for people on snowmobiles. Now, I wouldn't necessarily think about that, but this is why we do strategic planning and strategic priorities, so that we start to think more broadly about things that affect our community. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so if we take this, um, this model a little bit further, we can ask ourselves some questions in terms of this. So when we talk about improving sound government practices, right? What will help us make our local government run more smoothly? We've talked about some of that tonight. Better process and more clear, better communication, a better website. Things like that will help that. These can be objectives under this bullet, if we so choose. Fostering smart growth. I'm gonna take a minute and we're gonna try to define that. And what do we need to do to encourage smart growth? We talked about sustainable growth. I think now in the readings, I'm seeing more and more about, it, it's called smart growth. I think more in terms of towns and municipalities, but I'd like to spend a little bit of time on that. In terms of promoting tourism and a thriving economy, how can we encourage tourism? What's in a comprehensive plan that will help drive that objective forward? And what about our economy? Cultivate community connections. How can we bring people together? How are we enabling those connections? Are we a walking community and a destination, or are we a drive-through community? Right? If we're a drive-through community, that's a different focus than if we wanna be a walkable community. Right? So if we're, if we're just passing, you know, just here, because people are passing through, you might give priority to traffic, not to pedestrians, right? Um, protect and promote the natural environment. That natural environment is a big piece of our strategic asset, being the horseshoe bend of the James River, having the Van Cleve Nature Area, we have Scamland. We have several parks internally. How do we, how do we capitalize on those? What steps do we take to protect it, and where and how do we promote it, right? One of the things that Matt and I did when we were looking at redoing the website was, we were looking at some web statistics, and I think I talked about this at the council. And at the time, it was, I think fishing season had just started. And so the amount of hits on the outdoor spaces and fishing things were, you know, it was actually a lot more than we would have thought. And even Matt commented about, well, yeah, that's, that's really interesting, right? So that kind of information, maybe people don't think about, but it's actually one of the reasons why people come into town. So how do we capitalize on that? How do we promote it? How do we do a better job with that? And then implementing that accessibility. Are there services that we can provide? Are there things in the community that we need to do a better job for, uh, better accessibility? So these are all questions that we can answer, or at least start to think about as we look at this model. Okay, so under each of these, what I'd like to do is take some time and look at goals that we might achieve under each one of these. And I want you to think about goals in terms of within the next year, within the next two years, within the next four years. And I'd like to get some thoughts and ideas of things that we might be able to achieve together, or at least consider in our joint roles as town representatives. Does this make sense? Yeah, okay, so what I'm gonna ask you to do, as we've done before, is take some time and think about each of these six priorities. And think about goals that we might achieve in each of these areas. Right? So the first year goal in here might be just to research and develop a plan. Right? And that goal may not be fulfilled until year four or even beyond, right? But can we break that up? Can we make baby steps, mid-steps, long-term steps to actually get these priorities moving forward?
Maybe just restrict this to something that may pertain to the commission?
No. I mean, I think it should be things that, yes, jointly we do, but it could involve the public, it could involve, if it, if it helps achieve that objective and helps the town, right? One of the principles, if you look in your packet, I think it's towards the last page, on the back page there, Shannon. There are the principles that the town council agreed on, and one of them is Scottsville first. Right? So if there is something in there that helps our community, by all means, let's put it on the board, right? Doesn't mean that we have to all agree on it. Let's, we're brainstorming, so let's just get it on paper, and then we can decide. It may be that even if it's not the work of the town council and planning commission, that we can put that to one of our committees to say, hey, can you look into this for us? Because I think this would be really beneficial and aligns with our priorities, right? Okay, does everybody understand the exercise? The only thing is just make a list like this, however you want to do it. Um, do we have some, just some plain paper, Javier? Can we just get a few sheets or? I see this gentleman has a notepad, but not everybody does. Just some computer paper.
Are we doing this together?
I want you to do it individually first, and then we're gonna bring it together. Okay, and then as part of the strategic plan, so all of this information, I wanna be clear, will go into the strategic plan. The work that we're doing collectively tonight, it's part of the strategic plan. So the only thing to plan right now is have a high-level vision, which you'll see in there, a mission statement, some priorities. They did their, uh, the town council did their own SWOT analysis, so that documentation is in there, and also the principles. Right? So it's a very high level at this point. This work is to make it more real.
Right?
I can't do that.
All right. Well, they have hard copies. Meredith, you can have my hard copy for now. That is the round circle one, is the six priorities. On here or here? So these were just my thoughts. So under improved sound government practices.
I'm sorry, yeah, absolutely. I just, I thought that that was giving us direction.
No, 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 no. It was just my thought on what will help us make our local government run more smoothly. And if it puts it in the title, improved sound government practices. It's really what we've been talking about earlier, about better communication, about better process. But I'd like some real But I'd like some real tangible, right? If we're gonna do goals, we're gonna have measures, right? How do we measure the success? So if one of the goals is to develop and document a process of communication between town council and planning commission, then we have to maybe one goal is to develop it, document it, and test it. Right? If it sticks and it's working, then we keep it. If not, maybe the next year, we look at something different. Yes. So those are different goals, but remember, those goals have to be measurable, right? They're not just, I think this, right? Has to be very tangible and concrete. Does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense. It just seems like a big undertaking. But, you know.
That's why we rely on the collective wisdom and intelligence of the group to come up with these things. And you'll have time, I'll document them and I'll send them out to you as part of this overall, thank you Javier, this overall strategic plan, it will get added on. And you can go through it and edit it and, oh, I forgot, I should put this on it, right? Everybody should, it's not fine yet.
Are we just getting these tonight?
Yeah.
Oh. Um, that is, we talked in the, um, so what's for both of these? All did, or this? Really bad, completely.
I guess we can go to the next one or a bit.
Doesn't matter. We'll go through them. So what I want to do is, once you have some done, we're gonna go through these one by one. And you can call out, we'll go around in a sort of round robin fashion, and you can call out what, if anything, if you don't have any thoughts, that's fine too, right? And maybe during the discussion, somebody else's point will, you know, you'll have a thought as we're going through it. But again, back to vision without implementation with hallucination, right? So if we don't have some objectives to actually accomplish, then there's no guarantee that we'll ever focus on these priorities. I'm gonna give you a few more minutes, and then we're gonna start reporting out on the first one.
Which one is she first one?
Yes, it.
The first one is promoting sound government practices. Bill, this is right up your alley. I expect you to have lots. The pressure's on, Bill, the pressure is on.
Don't have an order or something.
It's not.
What, or there was something?
Yes.
Yeah. It was part of the, the flow clearly, my, uh, the path goal. And it was, you know, the, or. This definitely.
Bill, it's about.
Well, I guess, I don't know what's going on. I mean, all the trees, and that they were gonna say. But sure enough.
Yeah. I don't. So they didn't say.
They, they said some, but not, the big ones, not what we thought it's gonna, yeah.
What did they?
And then, I don't know, Alex isn't here. I, I just noticed it recently. I haven't had a chance to ask him. And it's hard too now because the ARB had a little bit of it up here, while I think he's still getting his feet planted. But yeah, they're tearing up all the trees down by by Dan's house too, over by Dollar General.
Uh huh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's like a big open.
I thought they were gonna play on the day, day, um, anniversary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The same ones, it's supposed to be saying, and it's found, it's all there, that were rotten, yeah, they found. And where you talked about are coming down the six, they all, they're just like, you were waiting.
Wow. I had a, let's, okay.
It's, it's in the landscape, you're planning a project later, but it's also in state plan.
Dead by, dead by dollars now? Yeah. I just, I just don't know how to read the site, but I wasn't saying, I just was surprised.
I got the best, I got the best earbit of everybody.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
No, I, that's, I directly look at it, that's what we say. Looking. No, no, well, yes, Dollar General and, and the.
Yeah, it's right on that corner by Dollar General, it's, uh, what, 20 and.
When I said, I would rather not have, but that's you at the addition one, like, yeah.
You'll have to plant a tree.
What?
You'll have to plant a tree.
More bamboo.
We have our face.
It's not crazy. I don't know. Good, same, um. What, what do you think? Was it grow really fast?
The Leyland pine?
No, they're native. Um, it's like a green giant, one of those six pods.
Oh, um. Hold on.
No.
Cedar, Cedar's native.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're cedars.
Leyland cypress, Leyland cypress are classic trees.
Oh. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I'll tell them what was.
Yeah. And surprisingly, they're native.
They grow really fast too.
Yeah. We, yeah. Sure.
I love you, Mary.
Very broad, they allow you. Oh, it's all the green giant.
Yeah.
I believe, there you go.
One of the types is green giant.
Yes.
Is it friendly?
It, it, yes, they're. They, they, they. Baby. They're very.
All right, guys. Back to the work at hand. Okay, so I want to take the first bucket, the improved sound government practices, I think that's probably the easiest one to go through. And start writing down the goals. So Meredith, do you have a couple you want to start us out with?
I just said better transparency, making sure that all agendas, minutes, and meeting recording is are more readily available.
Okay, so now we have to figure out, so this is a good example of it has to be very specific. So better transparency is a great objective potentially, but a goal would be a lot more specific. So how do we make those things, how do we improve those things? Right? Well, read, read out the other part of that. Better minutes, better.
Having all agendas, minutes, and meeting recordings more readily available to the public.
Okay.
When you posted on the specific, like, in a specific timeframe after each meeting.
There you go. Now we're getting there. There you go.
Within a week.
Okay, even better. Okay, so let's go, let's go. Post minutes, decisions, what else is on your list?
I, I had minutes, agendas, and meeting recordings.
Agendas and meeting recordings within one week. You see how that is more measurable? Right? We can actually see if we're making progress, if that gets done. Is that a year one, I'm assuming, goal?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what else did you have?
I didn't have anything else for it. I'm sorry, I'm a bad participant tonight. I'm very tired and very
I wanted to.
Hurting from, from allergies, yeah.
Towards that goal.
Pardon?
I think towards the goal, we need to hire somebody who's driven is to communicate with the town. Social media, events.
Yeah, I don't know if we have any budget for another salary.
Well, let's, let's. I, communication manager. Let's just call it that for lack of a better word, and put a four on.
To handle everything from public hearing announcements to, you know.
I think social media, I brought up Instagram channels before, that's where I am. I live on Instagram. I don't go to Facebook, I don't do anything. Some of the local businesses have some great Instagram channels, and I think they do a really good job with that. But it's hard to do all of them unless you have somebody focusing on. Now, maybe that could be an intern.
And updating the website, you could not, to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Making sure the calendar is up to date.
All right, what else? Molly, what did you have? Anything in the?
I did not, went around to that one, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Hadn't thought of that.
I was just thinking about, like, how useful would be a, a goal about, just like, I don't know, what you, we talked about earlier, creating an active, agreed upon plan for, these are the things that we're going to implement to communicate work. A, internally within committees, but also between the news and the public.
Okay, so how about we call that, um, uh, develop a communication plan, right? Develop an internal communication plan. Uh, I like that idea. I've worked, you know, I have a background also as a project manager, and there is a format. The mayor, I'm gonna, as part four of this strategic plan, the mayor and I have to get together to look at a uh, communication plan, and there are frameworks and models for that. And we could do that same thing for the communication between both groups. So I think that's a really good idea. Okay, that's a one-year, um, both of those are year one. Okay, Shannon, do you have any, or I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
Oh, I was just gonna mention, like, having a pretty specific on onboarding process.
Oh.
We're just.
Very good. Clear onboarding process. That a year one, two, four, should be a thing. One. Put a one slash two on. Okay, Shannon?
Um, we've already discussed, we'll get that with the public about meeting events, outcomes of meetings.
Uh huh. Yeah, okay. Good, now I think that's fine. I think we've captured that with the hired communication manager, updating what aside, the calendar and things like that would go a long way. Bill, anything? You must have a whole list in here.
Send, send a projected agenda in advance and add it to us.
Okay, so we have that one week in advance.
And, and we know about fifty minutes in advance, two before the meetings, so they could be looked at.
Okay.
Have a, well, it's, to mention that orientation, uh, have, have the, kind of, that.
For that's on there, onboarding process.
Really look at whether we have some larger committees that are not active, get rid of them, or have these, or find a way to make them active, and make sure that the committees are working.
Okay, so let's.
And have an updated policy and procedures for how town council and county commission works.
Okay, wait a minute, let's take more time. First one has, uh, review, uh, review committees. And I'm assuming that's a one-year?
Yeah, and, and we're just, well, also, communication, uh, with everyone, and there's communication quality, that there's a lot been a lot of communication issues, some people, but they're all, they're worried about.
Okay.
And I think.
But we need something, a goal is very specific, right? Improving communication is not a, a
Okay.
Okay, so improve the announcement on the website. Yeah, we've talked a lot about how to. Yeah, okay, let's have. Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's Molly had her hand up. I just want to get to her and then we'll come back to you, Molly.
Okay, so well, so I think you, I was thinking that we needed to, oh shoot, what were you just talking about?
There was the how to page. It was improve the announcement page on the website. Well, okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, I wanna go back to that. Hold that thought on policies and procedures. Okay, Molly, go ahead.
While we were talking about communication, I I did want to uh go to Commissioner Strathford's point of decorum. You know, putting a plan together or some sort of guidelines for people to actually read and say, I mean, it's like on Facebook when you have a page, should people say, they'd be kind to one another. That's important to remember.
I agree. And and not only, not only, not only that, yeah, we had a parking lot and I'm glad to thank you for bringing that back up. I think it's not only about the procedures, but it's about, uh and I talked about this at the meeting, about the consequences of that. What can be done? If somebody comes in and is completely disruptive and uh just is not productive, what can you do, right? There are certain things that you can do, right? People can be removed in certain instances. So I mean, but we all need to know. No, we're not there. But I think, I think when we focus on that as part of a strategic plan, we send a very strong message to the public, to holding ourselves accountable for the way we act. Right? Individually and towards each other uh and the public. And we expect some of that same respect back, right? We do know, I think, and and Mayor Smith, maybe you remember, I think it was Donna Price who said there was some legislation. I think you brought it up about Massachusetts had just passed something. Do you want to share that?
So that's not helpful, is it? I think it's okay to to put some guidelines there and remind yours.
I think it's also okay to say. Whoa, 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 like, I was pretty appalled by the the racist comments that were made during the public hearing for the law department and people not only like not saying, hey, that's not okay. Like, you have the right to come in and say what you want, but let's remember, these are your neighbors. These are your potentially new neighbors. Like you, this is not okay language.
It's a hard.
And then people applauded and nobody's, nobody shut that down. If you really, really did.
What was really interesting, because I was in the back of that meeting.
Yeah.
I watched a collective, ugh, from a lot of people in the audience who I think were just so surprised, borderline maybe even shocked at the comment that I I think people were just taken aback. Right? So but there's a fine line between, as as the mayor is pointing out, between freedom of speech and what is something really distasteful. It's really difficult. It's really difficult when you're a public official to weigh that, right?
But maybe we could just have some guidelines posted somewhere.
Well, eh eh, and I don't know, and this is why I'm working with the town lawyer right now. And he sent me all his stuff and Supervisor Price has sent me what Abilmar County has in place and things like that. And I'll draft it up and share it broadly with this group and beyond. But um I do think we need to send a stronger mash message about decorum is important when you're in these meetings. And how and and how we best do that, I don't know, right?
And not only that, I think we've gotten very loosey goosey on our times. The ti- timed part of the public, you know, sort of, you know, sometimes we you have three minutes, sometimes you have five minutes, sometimes Harold will talk for twenty minutes unless we shut up. You know what I mean? Like, I I think we need to take a time and say, this is.
Yeah.
This is what it is.
Well, that's why you have this, right? Something like this should be at the podium. And I just read these rules and one of the things that the lawyer sends is that everybody should get three minutes to speak. But if there's a large group, two minutes is more appropriate, right? This is a three-minute timer. When you come to the podium, you should turn it over. When those stands are done, you are done. And you do have the uh the person, in this case, the mayor, who holds the gavel, right, to say, you are done. Your sand has run out. There's a visible trigger here. You must leave the podium. We also.
Stand things like, you're gonna shut me down.
That's okay. But this and and I think Shannon, to your point, if you let everybody know the rules ahead of time.
Yeah.
And I think we are, but we have, if we don't enforce the rules, people will continue to operate outside the rules. And this, the the reason I put uh such a focus on this decorum procedures is because we need to be better, right? That's, it is embarrassed. It is, and we need to be strong.
And if we're not arbitrary, then somebody can't stand up and say, you're trying to.
Exactly. Anybody who speaks after that runs out, we're shutting you down, right? Make it very clear before the meeting starts. You can also say, if you're with a group, we'd appreciate it if you, somebody speaks for the group, and then you can turn to the group and say, do you all agree? And we see a show of hands. So there's other things that we can do in there to make those kinds of meetings where the public is there. They want to speak, but maybe help that along a little bit. Okay?
Um Kamali, quick question. I wanted to find out, if somebody comes up with a podium during matters of of the public or from the public or whatever, um are those things taken into consideration?
What's the responsibility? I think if if I'm hearing you correctly, Molly, what's the responsibility that the committees or meetings have? If somebody during the public forum brings up an issue, what's the responsibility of the governing body to respond to that issue in some actionable way, right? We'll take this under advisement and and do nothing? Or do we take it and do something and report back? What is that process? What are we expected to do?
I mean, I would. No, I just said, again, you're gonna have a wide array of people to speak. It is, my role is to listen respectfully. It's to to respectfully listen to what the person says. And if I, that's, I could choose to do more and but people are gonna speak from all different sides. So I I mean, a general answer is I listen respectfully. And I'm I'm hearing what they're saying.
I still don't.
Appreciate you at the meeting. You're thinking about it, we're gonna consider it or we're not gonna consider it, but the but this doesn't work. Instead of just dropping.
Guys, we're getting, we're getting in the weeds here. I think it's a really good appointment, uh uh a point, but we need to move on. We don't, we're not gonna solve everything here, but it's a good question. And you know what? It's it's so good. Let's put it on the parking lot. Amelie, if you could capture that, what is our responsibility? Uh or how do we, uh what do we do in the public forum when people bring up a point? What's our responsibility there? I think it's really, it's really a good thing. And that feedback. Yes, we listened to you and we heard you, and this is what we did, and this is what we decided. There's also some very good rules about the work session versus the formal meeting. And Supervisor Price had some good, uh you you know, she said something that really stuck with me, and I don't know why. It was sort of like aha moment, but there's a difference between a public, a a meeting for the public and a a meeting in public. Right? So what we're doing when we're up on the dais is having a a meeting in public. It's not necessarily for the public, right? It is for transparency sake. And so you have to be really careful not to allow people to um derail your agenda. Because there are things that you need to get through as a council, as a planning commission. And you had a question last time is when is it appropriate for people to chime in? We're a small community and sometimes we allow that, but pro forma, that really isn't allowed, right? Because it's the body that's meeting.
Maybe that's something to give to the public or have posted for the public that they understand.
I agree.
How that goes. And we're not ignoring you or discounting you. But I have been a person in the matters from the public who I got up. And there was absolutely no reaction response, thank you, anything. It was just, you know, well, maybe everyone said thank you, but I didn't know where to go from there. Like, you know, I just think it would be nice to know.
And I think those things should probably come back up in work session to say, is there anything we can do, anything we want to do, anything we should do about this that was brought up in the public forum, right? We don't necessarily do that with a degree of regularity. Okay, um anything else uh that we have? Bill, you had one more thing? Yeah.
Just upcoming events, upcoming uh meetings, uh just letting people know that uh the box was, that's what's going on, and fourth of July. Get something tangible, either a meeting or a vote.
Right.
A baby, like we did, we got from the pharmacy, you know, this is the next to have that. Somebody actually give give something at all, otherwise.
Right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't know.
Right, and some of these rules, the the mayor delivers like a State of the Union address, right? Is that is that something we should build into our plans, right? Is it done?
I went on Facebook last year to find out when the bachelor festival was.
Sound update or community. For news. Okay, guys, I want to bring us back. I want to go back. Bill, I said I'm gonna talk about this one. The one thing you had is improved policies and procedures. That's not quantifiable, right? So I need you to think about that on the specifics, if there's one, two, or three. Like, we've been talking about uh procedures and policies on decorum, right? That's a hard, tangible thing that we can measure. So just to have this blanket statement is more of an objective. But we've already got these six objectives that we're focusing on. So I need that to be more specific. And you don't have to do it right now, but um it needs to be specific. All right, Lisa, what do you have on yours?
I think. I don't know. Um I compile with the recent studies that have been done so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel or spend money that we don't have. So we, there have been multiple experts that have come and spoken before planning mission and sound council. Maybe this way we can gather all of that together in one place so that people can refer to it and know that some research has been done.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, it was difficult during the loss to get all these plans and market studies and everything that has been done uh to find them.
Well, there was a big staff report that is several pages long that attracts some of those things. But maybe getting, continuing that and keeping it updated, evaluating the source of the information to determine whether it's you know, biased or not, um and getting that out here on the website after a few minutes, so everyone can see it. I'm confused, town officials. Um and I would say, I don't know how to put this into sound government practices, but uh we we have to be realistic about what our budget is, what our income is and what our expenses are. Because there's, we have a lot of great ideas, but there's only so much that we can actually afford and put into practice. So I don't know how to make that more um transparent to people and kind of, I think. Well, um I just think it's a concern. I keep hearing over and over again, like, we need to do this and we need to do that, but.
Well, and you see this at the federal level too, right? So Congress will pass actions and say, we need to do this. Right? And then all the various um government bodies say, well, where's the funding? We don't have a funding to do that. Right? So that's, that's a challenge to let people know what the funding buckets are and and where they're allocated. Now, Meredith had a good suggestion not that long ago to have a special meeting where we go through the budget line item by line and talk about these things. What are we spending the money for specifically, right? We cannot have this sort of blanket, we have this much money and you you sort of have these big envelopes without some oversight. I mean, Bill has talked about that over and over again. And we've talked about having sort of not just a a singular view, oh, we've got a balanced budget this year. We need to have a pipeline view. What's coming in one year, three years, five years, right? Do we need to repair anything? Is anything going to fall apart in the next five years that we need to start putting money away for now? So um so there's all kinds of thoughts on that. And so Bill has talked about having a committee. I don't know how you all feel about this, having a committee just focused on financial management, really. And getting that communication out, letting people know what's happening, come up with a process for managing our budget in terms of a pipeline and and broader things. So, yeah, Ma.
Another specific idea might be to get together people to look for other funding opportunities. Like grants and like about fundraisers, running things of that nature.
It's a great comment. We have looked at the spending, but we have not looked at revenue streams.
Yeah.
And and br- and brainstorming about additional revenue streams. I have a few thoughts. I'm sure other people do. So let's do this. Let's um let's capture something like, should we, should we put something on here about having a financial management committee? Forming a financial management committee? Ron is saying no. Is it part of government services already? Because it does say that in the charter, I think.
Checks and balances needs to be somewhere.
We definitely need somebody to look at spending, basically, that will, that will spend it. I mean, not about paper pencils, but anything bigger. We're talking about solar. We need to look at that before we jump into that. Really, I think that's, I think it's essential.
So Mr. Mayor, what are your thoughts here?
Matt found us a lot of grant money over the last three or four weeks, a lot. Hoping the next time those rare is to happen successfully happens to.
I'm not making a value judgment. I just think it's.
And if you ask Matt, Matt would say he wanted to do more.
Matt, it's budget and we approve the budget. The budget is there in black and white and it tells you what you can spend on the money. Now, certainly, if there was a major, if you got a hundred thousand dollars in your capital fund and you need something that costs fifty thousand dollars, yeah, that's especially for, that's a sound, you're skilled seller. But if it's something small or if there's something we haven't used over here and you need it over here and you shift it around, the budget is.
I think, though, we've had the same argument over and over again. And I'm gonna use the same example that we have used over and over again. We mentioned in passing at a work session, we need better signage for Van Cleef so people know it's there. Now, when you're driving down Valley Street, there is a sign on the corner of Birdham Valley going southbound that says DMV and an arrow pointing into the Victory Hall parking lot. I don't know how much that costs. Didn't cost twenty seven thousand dollars. When we mentioned in passing, we would like better signage for Van Cleef so that people knew it was there, I think most of us were thinking something like that. Now, we've spent all this money. You could still drive down Valley Street and have no idea that Van Cleve is there. And when we had, you know, a thousand to two thousand dollars in mind, if that, and all of a sudden we're blindsided with, we spent twenty seven thousand dollars. Now we won't spend the three thousand dollars to at least make them usable and people driving down the street still don't know it's there. I think that could have used some oversight and could have been something that wasn't spent then. When we spent, you know, we chose the HVAC option that was like eighteen thousand dollars higher than the best bid that came in and none of us knew about that or whatever. That can use some, now is it in the budget? Yes. But then you might come to a point where we gotta spend money on something else and, oh, we don't have any more money because we spent eighteen thousand more on the HVAC. We spent twenty seven thousand on signage, stuff like that, even though it was in the budget. But you don't know if another capital expense is gonna come up that is necessary and important and now we don't have the money left.
Okay, so that's the issue on financial management. I think it does need some checks and balances. I think it does need greater transparency. How we do that, I'm not sure. So maybe the goal, uh, for this year is to research and come up with a proposal for how we do that. Can everyone live with that?
We look at tourism and
Wait a minute, we haven't gotten, you guys are, you guys have so many ideas, we can't capture them. So please
Just, I'll give you my list.
Yeah.
So, so just to follow up on this one. So one of the things that I always say to, I've said this to our
Dan has the floor.
Is, is basically the goal of what we should do is good public policy. So almost many, many a conversation I would have with Matt or with other people. This is kind of behind the scenes. Good public policy means you listen to the public, you have integrity when you operate. It means as a town, that means you take everybody's voices in, even if voices we agree or disagree. You may not know behind the scenes, that's actually what we do. And even though we may view it differently, the goal is a clear, open, honest debate, friendly debate where we can listen. And, and good public policy means voices are heard. Good public policy doesn't mean we always agree, but it's an open, I mean, my point that I say over and over and over and I've said it for 10 years is that we would have, that's our goal, was good public policy. And so the way you measure that is you call people to account for that. Unfortunately, there was a lot of things that happened that weren't that way and our town suffered for it because we deviated from good public policy. And even though Meredith said, I, you and I have a very different view of the signs, which we can debate in another tone. Um, so one thing I would say about good public policy would be we are trying to bring all the voices to the table and then from that, allow decisions to happen and allow for the winning voices to have their way.
So you're saying that you did have conversations about what the public wanted as far as the signage and things like that.
Well, at, simply put on the signage issue, we've, I've been dealing with the signage issue with Van Cleve for like 10 years. Those, so to get the kind of kiosks that we, what Matt got are actually the kind of kiosks in keeping that we tried to get before. They cost a lot of money and so that, and we actually tried to get grants. Well, they, well, that's
All right, all right.
I'm not saying this particular, this particular design would be, you know, whether we should have this one or not. What I can tell you is entrance corridor kiosks are really expensive and we were looking for us entrance corridor kiosk. We, I tried twice to get grants for them. They were talking like 10 to 15 thousand dollar grants six or seven years ago. They're very expensive. So, I mean, that, that type of pricing for that type of stuff costs that kind of money.
Right, so I, I don't wanna solve this or go back and forth, cause we have, but there is an issue here is that there is information coming up in this discussion that hasn't necessarily been transparent and shared before. And I think this is the frustration of transparency and things like that. And we need to figure out a way to have those pros and cons brought up so that we can make informed and intelligent decisions, right? So that's a good, I mean, this is a good example.
When George was town administrator, he said that anything over five hundred went before council.
And that's per the town charter.
Um, and anytime he wanted to spend money on any capital expense that was over five hundred dollars, he had to have it approved by council. So, I mean, I don't know why that went by the wayside, but
We have to get back to what are the rules and
But, you know.
No, but maybe it's just a matter of looking what policies are in place and enforcing the policies or voting on a new policy if that policy is not adequate, right? If it's not working. So this is a really good example of, um, communication of needing more information, uh, of more sharing, not only here, but in the community. I will say, uh, when I sat in that discussion, I did notice Meredith and others taking tallies of votes, right? Because they were factoring them in, right? I'm assuming you were doing it
Big on tallies when, when there's a big.
Yeah, I, I think that's really relevant. But the other thing is, the other side of that coin I've heard is like, well, there are lots of people on the other side, right? Who didn't come. Well, if the public's not gonna come and represent themselves, then we're only as good as the information that we have in the room at the time. So there's, there is responsibility on both sides, right? On our side as a governing and voting body, as policymakers, but also on the public to come to the table and make sure that we get an accurate representation. And we have to make that very clear. Lisa, no, do you wanna say something?
Well, I mean, I think that people come out when they're close to something usually, it's just
Yeah.
So it, it's unfortunate because we'd like everyone to present their, their side that's certain pattern.
Yeah, I read a statistic once that said, um, you'll only ever hear about a good experience like on Yelp or something like, like one out of every 10. But you will hear every negative thing that happens on social media, right? So people are more apt when they have a bad experience or when they don't want something to come up. But we have to be very clear on those important decisions that if somebody is for it, it's, it's equally as important for them to come and be heard, right? So, um, we're only as good, if we're listening as we should, we're only as good as the people who will speak up. So, okay.
Now, I'm sorry, I hate to ask this question, about how much longer are we looking at?
We are probably, I had hoped to get a lot further, but I think it's been productive for what we've done. I hope you feel it's productive. What I'd like to do at this point is take all of your ideas and suggestions. If you allow me to collect them, I will put them in the framework.
I just
And then, no, no, everybody's tired, right? It's, I had, I had planned to close by nine. So I will take what you have. I will put it in this, um, OGSM framework. And I would send it to each of you and ask for your comments, okay? So before it's finalized, when I send it, I need you to look at it very seriously and see if there's anything missing, anything that's out of turn, anything I might have gotten wrong before we finalize this, okay? I may even put some thoughts in on measures and objectives and I'd like you all to weigh in on them. But the goal is to complete this framework so that we have some shared goals and measures for the next year, two years, four years. I think everybody should have an understanding of what the strategic plan is, potentially how we can use it moving forward. All of this information we've done tonight will fold into that strategic plan. So it will be a joint strategic plan of town council and planning commission and should be communicated out to the public. Okay, are there any questions before we close?
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much. You're so welcome. Okay, everybody. So I guess we have to, do we have to motion to close? What do we do to close this?
Your motion to close, council.
Second.
Our pleasure.
Bye. All right, everyone. Thank you, thank you for joining us. Any
Before in the meeting, you in person, Eileen.
Yeah, thank you. Here, I, I look forward to it too. All right, everybody, we're gonna, how we are, if we can close down the
All right, bye.
I bunch of personal notes as part of like
Figure.
I just
If you've
Relevant information in the
Yeah, sure.